Seven o'clock, we call this meeting to order.
We got a couple of things.
Start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. A few from the audience, alright? We're gonna start with the agenda for tonight and the meeting minutes from last month's Planning Commission meeting, which took place September 17th, 2024. We all have the agenda in front of you, as well as the meeting minutes from last month. Does anybody have any corrections or adjustments to be made? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion. Go ahead. I make a motion to approve the agenda. What's the date on that thing?
It is the October 15th.
I know. But today's date is the old meeting.
Oh, 17th, September 17th.
September 17th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion of the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
We will open tonight's meeting with comments from the citizens. These will be comments on any other business other than the master plan five-year update. So if anybody has any comments, step to the podium, state your name and your address. No citizen comments, we'll close with citizen comments. Next thing on the agenda would be the public hearing. So this is the zoning ordinance amendments for the renewable energy facilities. This has to do with general provisions, wind energy, and large-scale solar energy systems. We've been talking about this for a couple of months, as to how we as a township want to adopt, or if we want to adopt a Creo that governs some of this. We've had several conversations with Karen, our planning advisor, in regards to how the state controls a lot of this, so... Alright, you're right. I apologize. Let's start with a motion to open the public hearing. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
A motion of the second to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Okay. Sorry about that. Back to where I was at. So Karen, you wanna kind of talk a little bit about where we're at with all of this, please?
Sure. So the state had passed legislation that basically set the requirements for renewable energy facilities, for wind and battery storage facilities that are 50 megawatts and up, and for wind facilities, it would be 100 megawatts and up. The state has stepped in and provided requirements. And by doing so, that means that communities, if they want to adopt a compatible ordinance that would meet the state regulations, they cannot be any more restrictive than what the state is requiring. This is a new process for all communities right now. The new legislation becomes effective at the end of November, so a lot of communities are trying to examine what they'd like to do. At previous planning commission meetings, it was discussed that Casco should explore looking into adopting a compatible renewable energy ordinance. This would cover the solar, wind, and battery storage. A draft has been made available to the public, and basically it would add some new definitions to the current zoning ordinance, as well as amend Casco's current wind and solar ordinances, and provide basically a new ordinance that would cover these large-scale renewable energy systems that is in compliance with the state regulations. We have sent this over to the township attorney. When I initially spoke with her, she said that the language seems to comply with the state, but she wanted to go over with a colleague of hers who typically focuses on renewable energy systems. And upon consulting with them, she reached back out to me, and she wanted to share that in communities where there is a lot of opposition to the new state regulations, communities might want to consider not adopting a Creo, but rather deferring those developers to the state. Because essentially, if a community adopts a Creo, it's all the same state regulations, the review's just done locally, but the community can't modify anything. We can't modify setbacks on anything. We can't modify what... We can't limit what districts it could be in. The community can't... They can't modify any of the standards to be more tailored to the community's needs. So if that is the case, the thinking is, why not just defer them to the state? This is a little last minute, but I do have some additional information. This was released from U of M, and it kind of talks about what are the different options. If a community adopts a compatible ordinance, again, the review is done locally, but it does have to be in compliance with the state regulations. There's no ability to modify it. If the community can choose to defer a developer to the state, a community could choose to tweak their current ordinance to become a workable ordinance, or a community could choose to do nothing and just maintain their current ordinances. Right now, you guys do have a utility scale ordinance that was probably intended to cover such a development if it ever came to Casco. But understanding that if the community does not adopt a Creo, a developer can always gain approval from the state, and likely would do so.
So it's the attorney's colleague's opinion to not deny it?
If there is community opposition to these standards, then to defer development to just go to the state. And that could be done by referencing it in your zoning ordinance. You could still make an amendment saying, you know, solar battery systems 50 megawatts and over will be deferred to Michigan Public Service Commission for review, as well as wind energy systems, 100 megawatts and over. Or if you guy... If a developer were to approach and you guys don't adopt a Creo, you would just automatically refer them to the state. Or, like I said, there's the two other options. We're having a workable ordinance where you tweak what you currently have, hoping that maybe a developer would still like to go through the local process, or choose to just maintain what you have. A developer still, in theory, could approach the community and decide to go through the local process, but it's...
If we did adopt one, would that require that developer to at least come to us so they can hear our opinion?
No. If it's not a Creo, the developer is not required to go through any local review process. It is an option, though, and it's being brought up because, in theory, for... If a developer were to go through the state, it could take up to a year for their application to be reviewed. When an application is filed locally, we have a much shorter timeline to review that. So they could, in theory, if they saw Casco's ordinance and they said, "I'm fine with meeting these step back and screening standards," they could choose to file locally. I don't know how likely that is, but that is a conversation that's going on.
So is it in our better interest for them to come to us rather than the state?
Well, she's saying that they don't have to, but it probably sounds like if we had something, it might be shorter for them to this.
Oh, just so it would be to their advantage?
Right.
And just so we're clear, we're only talking about the large-scale 50 megawatts and over, which is typically gonna be your utility companies.
Okay.
You know, your DTE or your consumers that's gonna wanna do something like this, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, DTE is gonna know these rules and regulations well before us. They're gonna know exactly who they're gonna go to. They probably already have people on the state side, lobbyists, and that. I mean, they're a huge corporation. They know the rules better than we do here. In my opinion, or something like that, it's probably best for the state, who should be more experienced in this stuff and have more exposure to it, govern somebody like a DTE versus us trying to do it.
And our rules can't be any stricter than the state anyways.
Right.
So where's our benefit? Like, it's not like we can say, "Well, we want 100 foot setback. The state only wants 50," because we're not allowed with that. Is that correct? Weren't we only allowed to limit ourselves to no more stricter than the state regulation?
Right.
So it's gonna be the same.
So no extra conditions could be added in or anything like that? If a community does opt to have a Creo, the community is eligible for something called a, I believe it's called a renewable-ready community award. And I think the community would be eligible for, I think it's 5,000 for every megawatt of that facility, whereas if the community opts out and just lets the... It defers to the state, the community is eligible for 2,000 per megawatt. There is still... There would still be...
So there's a financial gain?
In either case, there's a financial gain, but for the... If the community were to adopt a Creo, there would be a 3K increase.
Increase.
But what would the lead would face be for us to be involved in something like that?
That's something the community would have to consider.
Because those...
Well, maybe it is, they're fine.
In my mind, I feel like if the state's regulating it and we can't do anything, I mean, basically, if they meet the state requirements, we just have to say yes. So, I mean, it's not like we can put any stricter rules or regulations or, you know...
So they don't need any permits, no fees, no nothing for us, they just go with the state?
Can you have a prelim in the area meeting so we have, like, at least a little bit input to talk to them and then send them to the state? No? You know what I'm saying? That way you can say, "Hey, we would like this, this, and this," even though they might not wanna do it. At least you got some kind of input.
I don't think that would be required.
No?
Karen, what are you hearing about the process of the state condemning anything coming from Lansing as far as this type of thing is concerned? Have we heard anything as far as what the law will actually say? In other words, if they own my property, then they can condemn, right? It's...
I think you have to be a willing participant.
Yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't that... That's not condemned. Wouldn't that be more like eminent domain?
I use the word condemn. I'm not sure. It could be, you know...
Anything.
But what control? It just sounds like we're losing another item as far as trying to keep ours proper.
I have not heard anything specific relating to renewables on that.
They have the property already, they don't need more. They're gonna do it where they already seem to have the property held.
You gotta ask them.
The question would be, what about the implications?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We have to finish this first, right? Before we open this back up.
If the planning commission choose to open it up till before, and then after listening to public comments, we can go back and continue discussion like that. How would the planning commission like that look forward?
We will open up the public hearing as soon as... As soon as we're ready. I'd like Karen to kind of finish your thought and go from there.
Something to think about, and it's in this packet that I handed out. And I can... Unfortunately, I only have three copies, but if... I can email it to you if you guys wanna review it. If a development spans... If a single development were to span across multiple communities, if not all those communities have a Creo, then automatically it would have to default to the state. So let's say there was, for whatever reason, a development were spanning between Casco and Iowa. I'm sure that's unlikely because of road. But if any... If there was something that was gonna cross between you and a neighboring property or a neighboring jurisdiction that was all part of the same facility, everyone has to have a Creo in order for it to go through the local process. If a neighboring community doesn't, and it's also going to neighboring communities, automatically gets deferred to the state. As far as I know, none of your neighboring communities are, at this moment, adopting a Creo. So just something to think about as well.
Hey, Joe, is my get away to the floor? I can't talk to him until the floor. He will ask Joe a question.
On what public comment?
Is this something that you ever see coming back to the township other than state control?
At this point. But if the planning commission... Like I said, this legislation goes into effect November. If the planning commission still has time to make a decision. Once that November date rolls around, in theory, if you guys don't have a Creo and if someone wanted to apply, they would have to... They would automatically defer to the state. But in the future, if you guys decided you would like to adopt something, you could. There's nothing that could prevent you. Apparently, an issue that could happen is if you adopt a Creo and then rescind it in the middle of a review process, start making modifications to it, you could lose your Creo status. And in the state legislation, there was some language referring to, you might not be able to get that Creo status back again.
So basically, we need to make sure that it's 100% what we wanna do before we do it. We can add it later, but it's a lot more destructive to try to change it later or get rid of it later, if you will.
Right. Especially if it were in the middle of a review process for a developer.
So even if we don't have a Creo, they do have to notify us, and they do still have a public hearing just for community involvement, but it doesn't hold them?
They would... If they still have to follow, it would, you know... Originally, I talked, we thought one of the advantages having a Creo is if a development were to come through the community, community members would be notified in a fashion that would be familiar to them. If a developer chooses to develop and there's not a Creo, they still have to have a public meeting. They, you know, the community would still be notified as to what's going on, and there would be opportunity for public comment.
Do you see any disadvantage to the community to not adopt a Creo tonight or even in the near future, say, three to six months, as we continue to try to navigate this and understand it better?
I would say not at this point, because it is so new, and a lot of communities at the moment are not adopting one, so...
And to our knowledge, we don't have anybody like a DTE or a large-scale operation just waiting for that legislation to go into effect in November to start this process. Like, nobody's knocking down our door trying to do this, right?
Not that I've heard.
Not that I've heard, no.
No, not so far. Jimmy, got anything else?
I just wanna know the money aspect of it. So, you know, I mean, if you could throw 5,000 megawatt, the offers, right, is 250 grand. Right? That's big for Casco.
Right.
Compared to 200 grand, that's a lot of money.
Compared to 100 grand.
Oh, yeah. That's a lot of money.
Okay. Well, that's something we can talk more about. Dan, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Keith?
Just one thing, Karen. Is there any way we can get our hands on, like, DTE-proposed areas that they might be looking at? That would be... That the public might be able to get their hands on?
I don't... I don't know. I have not seen any projections like that. I don't know if that's something companies are willing to share at this point, so...
Well, public utility has another responsibility to us.
That's true.
And, you know, we have Consumers Power, our largest property owner in Casco. That's what concerns me a great deal. If they decide to put solar panels all over this township in my backyard, it sounds like I don't have anything to say about it.
That's a good question. I can see what we can fund.
Start by looking at the township ownership map and see what parcels they own that are even big enough to support 50-megawatt solar panel funding.
What if we say they had 48 acres?
And it has to be close enough to a substation, isn't it? Or something in the station?
Well, that's what they'd like.
250 acres?
I've heard that one meeting we went to, they talked about that.
Yeah.
Need to have that place to pass on the power, too.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a reason why they wanna pay more if we have a Creo. I wonder if...
I think it's because the process would be faster. And I think the state wants to reward communities that are participating in this process.
Participating with no real say. It's just kind of weird. You know what I mean? It just seems odd to me that they're gonna pay us to have something that doesn't carry any weight anyway.
Probably politics along the way.
It's not their money, it's...
So I have a Creo, I want you any good, but we're gonna pay you more if you do have one, but we're still in it.
Well, it's one last review they have to do as well, because it would just be done locally.
We would be handling all that.
Maybe they can make a solar panel maze.
Hey, not a bad idea. I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
Alright, if we don't...
We would have them... So if we have a Creo, we have the meeting, we do all the planning. We take care of all the public things. If they... We don't, they have to come and sit here and take care of all that. Is that the way?
Yeah, I don't see where we would spend a lot of money. Yeah, why would we have to spend a ton of money to get... Pretty much, the process is locked up anyways.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, the difference.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's worth really looking into, because they're gonna do it anyways, and we have no say. Why not be rewarded for what we have no say over anyways?
Right.
Not that I ever wanna see it happen, but if it's gonna let somebody pay for it.
You could use it.
Yeah. You could maybe take it.
Jimmy, do you have anything else before we open this up to the public?
No.
Okay. We'll open this topic up to public comments, which we wish to address the board with regards to this topic. Sorry?
Do you have to make a motion?
It'll be so matter of an open public hearing, right? A second motion, right, to open to comment?
Yeah, we're just... We're gonna close the public hearing after we're done.
Okay.
So if any citizens would like to comment on this particular topic, please stand at the podium, start with your name and your address.
Hi, Joyce Kispursky, 9715, my name's Room. I believe you almost... You probably answered most of the questions. My question was about the timing issue. So if you didn't adopt a Creo, you know, what is the state's adoption or the state's initiative for letting you know that they're going to bring... DTE's bringing something in? What's the timeline for us being notified that it's happening? Or would it be better if you do create that and establish the guidelines that you may want to create with the Creo? Would that... You'd have notification sooner. In other words, you'd know more faster that things were going on. That's, you know, just a question.
Yeah.
And then I also agree that if you are gonna do it, make money.
Yeah?
Most of you get it.
I think you kind of touched on the notification process, right?
Yeah, and if it were to go through the state, the host community still has to be notified. How much sooner does that occur than it would if we had adopted a Creo? We don't know. That's something that we can...
So if we adopted a Creo, would they still have to follow our 30 days? Notify us 30 days before they wish to come in front of the board? So we would get a notification, and then they could come to the board 30 days from that point? Or the next scheduled meeting, 30 days?
Right.
We treat it as any other cycle plan review.
Okay. So can I answer your question a little bit?
The difference would be that you have public hearing, though.
No, it's not a special land use.
Okay.
There's a public meeting. Well, I...
Yeah, public meeting versus...
There's a public meeting.
It's a good question. It requires the developer to hold the public meeting where our community can tell that. 60 days before the meeting, they need to come in. You guys... There is a process for it.
There's still a process.
Yeah. It's not really public hearing or anything. You just get to say your piece.
It's still a community meeting. At any public meeting, people are... Can always have comments. Might not be a formal public hearing, but people can still comment.
It still gets published in the paper.
On the state level, does this all go through the Public Service Commission?
Yes.
All of it goes through there?
Well, wait, you got Joe once.
Yeah. No, Jimmy wanted to ask me a question.
I wanna see the lawyer, possibly. What kind of fees? If it's already has a... They already have a direct way of doing it, how many... How much fees do we get if we go get set?
You know, I'm not sure. We do have a counselor in the house here, maybe he could shed some light. Yeah, he's not our attorney, but he is an attorney.
I'll give you some insight.
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
I'm Gary Denon, 52624 Laurel Oakland Industrial Township. I've had a few dealings, not on behalf of municipalities, but on behalf of property owners as to solar energy facilities. A few years ago, I was doing one in Marysville. It was zone industrial, it was about 50 acres. It was a company from Arizona that was gonna build a solar facility. And it was about a quarter of a mile from a Detroit Edison substation. So we obviously had to get Detroit Edison's approval. For some reason, this was before the adoption of this legislation, Edison was opposed to it. And the company, after two years of paying to my clients a fee, an option fee, they just came up and said, "We'll come back later, maybe." So I talked to Detroit Edison representative and said, "Do you wanna do it?" Versus your competitor. Because Edison, in one sense, in my opinion, didn't want outside organizations having a solar facility, putting the power into the grid, and having Edison pay them. So the person from Edison said, "We only wanna do it if you have a 400-acre piece." So I said to the person, "If you go up I-94 by the ISD School District, there's a small, that's maybe on three or four acres. If you go out I-96, going to Flint, there's one on about 10 or 20 acres. If you go out M-14 here in Iowa, there's one on a five or 10-acre piece. So when you tell me you want 400 acres, it's kind of like malarkey." And then I was involved in another one just about a year and a half ago. Several thousand acres in size in the township in Sinclair County. That municipality had adopted an ordinance in 2019, and we basically were gonna be in compliance with that. They didn't like it, and one of the farms was right at a brand-new substation that Edison built like three years ago. So it was in an ideal location to hook into the grid. Edison never came and said one thing, but the people in the township, they were all up in arms. And so the township, they adopted a moratorium saying, "You can't build any solar facilities until this moratorium ends." I think that precipitated the legislation that's now on the books. That goes into effect in November. And I would say to you, whether I lived in your township or not, before you adopt an ordinance, you're not lawyers, but you should read the legislation, because it's somewhat complicated, but somewhat straightforward. And part of the idea behind it was, because every municipality was gonna have their own quirks and basically preclude this clean energy source, that the state was gonna step in. Just like years ago, the federal government stepped in as to regulation of cable TV, that if you had an Edison pole, you could put the cable TV line on the Edison pole or the Michigan Bell pole, because municipalities were adopting things saying you can't share poles. The federal government stepped in and said, "That's malarkey, and we have to have some uniformity." But intertwined in this legislation is that the Public Utility Commission in the state are gonna adopt certain regulations, and those probably won't go into effect or be a... and those probably won't go into effect or be adapted for like another six months, from my perspective. So until people know what that is, the, uh, whether you're Detroit Edison or another big energy producer, whether it's consumer power or outside companies, because outside companies are perfecting the process for solar energy. My son, who's a doctor that lives over St. Joe's, Michigan, he says over that way, there's a lot of farms that are being converted to solar energy facilities because the people over there are not opposed to it. And I've talked to some farmers and they say, if you build a solar energy array so many feet off the ground that they'll be able to figure out a way to grow alfalfa under the solar cells because there's aisles, the tractor will go down the aisle, have an arm to cut it, another small machine to go in and break it and bail it. So it's like, if you own a piece that's gonna be solar, you're for it. If you're the neighbor, you're against it. It's just like up in the thumb. When windmills started going up there, there was a lot of people that were opposed to it. Then there was other people, especially farmers, that were in favor of it because it didn't impact adversely on the amount of their acreage. And they got rental money from Detroit Edison and other facilities. So I think you have to really study the situation and try to do what's best for your community. And there is in that legislation, different methodologies of creating revenue for the local municipality. And it's kind of like, if it's in your community, it's a fee to your community. It's just like if you go to Lennox Township, there's the high tree acre landfill. They're the host community, they get a certain fee based on the tonnage that goes in there. And Lennox, that's been a fact for fifteen or twenty years, has reaped the benefit of that revenue. So I, I think it's something that you gotta consider, but you guys have, and ladies, you have to read that statute and then see what the regulations and the application fees are that the state's gonna put out. And that's gonna be, that's not gonna happen next month, I don't think.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your insight.
Yep. Any clauses, anything good? No.
You're fifteen minutes free. Alright, uh, any, any other, uh, comments from the public? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and then we'll make a motion to table this. We'll do what we, make the motion is what we want, correct? Make the motion to close the public hearing. Okay, so first we'll start with a, a motion to close the public hearing. Make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second half.
Make a motion, a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, all opposed? Okay. The next thing we need is a motion to what we're gonna do next with this, uh, the zoning ordinance amendments that we thought we may adopt. Somebody wanna make a motion on that?
Have we got a table to rule out or no?
I think we got, in the mic, we need to table it until we have more.
I wanna understand if we can make, when you just said that.
Yeah. So let's table, make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table, uh.
Zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a, and a second to table the zone, the adoption of any zoning ordinance amendments for, in relation to renewable energy facilities? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, all opposed? Carry. Okay. We'll come on that. Uh, moving on, we do not have any unfinished business from last month. So we'll move on to our new, new business section. First thing we have, uh, on our new business is a special land use request for Mr. Mark Williams for a used car dealer lot at nine one six six Marine City Highway. Mr. Williams, take the podium, introduce yourself, please.
Hello, everybody, I'm Mark Anthony Williams. I have my dad here with me, Mark Frederick Williams, I'm a fix. I'm here today for a special land use, uh, zoning and municipal approval for a Class B dealer's license. My goal is to get a few years under my belt, uh, in the business and, uh, you know, after that, find my own home location and, you know, set up my business elsewhere. But my dad's been at, um, nine one six six Marine City Highway, Mark's Auto, um, you know, for quite some time and he's got a beautiful shop there. Um, as far as, you know, the appearance at the road, you know, nothing's gonna change. It's not like we're putting flags out or anything like that. I'm just trying to, um, you know, get my foot in the door and taking advantage of, uh, you know, my dad having the, the building and him wanting to help me as well.
I have a question, you say dealer lot or are you putting a bunch of cars out there?
So, uh, the cars will be behind the building. Um, there won't be a lot up by the road or anything like that. Um, they'll, they will be in the back of the building.
Is that stated in there?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if it is stated in there.
Karen, you wanna go through your, uh, your review, your special land use review?
Yeah, so this is a preliminary special land use, the plant commission, um, or preliminary special land use through the plant commission, so we need to set the public hearing getting for it. But, um, as the applicant said, they want to have, um, uh, they're proposing the additional use of a used car sale at the current service center. Um, this is a special land use in the industrial district. Um, they're not proposing any new buildings or any new paving. Um, the applicant has said that they will be able to, um, utilize the current space to, uh, in the current paving for the used cars. Um, in my review, the only items that I, um, would need clarification on is the landscaping. Um, ordinance requires that whenever a parking lot evuts a non-ag or non-residential property, a green belt at least fifteen feet is to be provided with one large deciduous tree every forty feet. I know you have existing vegetation, but if we could just get a clarification of spacing of that vegetation on that green strip where the parking lot, where, where the parking lot is adjacent to the neighboring property. Um, if the vegetation already meets that, um, then you're fine. But if you need additional vegetation, initial is the plan where the additional vegetation would go. And then, um, you have a trash enclosure on site and we just need more information about it. Um, we need to know what the, um, uh, what the materials of the fence are, um, and if there's a gate on there, um, what the base of the trash enclosure is. And, um, on, on sides of a path that do not above pavement, um, where the rat wall is. So it's just more clarifications on that.
Okay.
On the site plan. And those were the only two items, just the landscaping and details on the trash enclosure.
Um, as far as the rear parking lot and the adjacent land, would that, are you referring to the east side or the west side?
The west side, the west side.
West side, okay. And then I would have to just show what trees are on the property there or?
You have to confirm that if those current trees meet that forty, it needs to be a tree every forty feet wherever there's a parking lot next to, um, your neighboring property in the industrial district. So we would just need to verify that. And if for whatever reason, existing vegetation didn't meet that, because you're providing, you're having a new land use, the site has to comply with the ordinance. So you would just have to show where you would put additional plantings to meet that.
Okay.
Sydney, it looks like, I'm looking at Google Earth, it looks like you'd probably have to put.
Yeah, you probably have, we just need to see that.
Some more trees along that line with the pines going towards the north. It looks like you'd probably have to put a few more in there to.
You're talking over here, right?
Yeah.
Right there already, you're talking about the, the parking lot here. So it'd be along some additional.
No, there's no additional parking. It's just for the existing, basically along the, uh, where.
Backside or the west side.
On the original site plan, um, the only parking spots were shown on the west side. The parking spots on the north side are the ones that I had added in to get the numbers where I needed them to be for both businesses on the same property.
Yeah, we just need a confirmation of the vegetation along the west parking area, that's all.
So, so what you show here on your, your site plan, you have parking spaces along the west property line.
Correct.
And it looks like you have a tree in the corner where the driveway meets the parking spaces and then two trees there.
Yes.
If anything, it looks like you may need an additional one or two trees as this parking lot goes a little further back than maybe it did originally. So you have a tree here, a tree here, I don't know what the space is in between these two, but you probably need another one, maybe here and here to conform, if that makes sense.
Um, there, um, is vegetation that has grown up over time, um, so they weren't there when I was little. But now there are some decent sized trees in that area, so I may be able to just put the ones that are already there and then it'd be okay?
If there's, yeah, I mean, if there's, there's a green belt of vegetation that, that meets the ordinance, then yeah, you don't have to add anything. It just, it's not on your site plan, so you just have to provide, you know, some evidence that it, that it's existing.
Okay.
Can you see it on Google Earth?
And then the, the trash enclosure, uh, was made out of wood. Um, we, we had, um, a wood enclosure around it over the years. The fence has just gotten destroyed, so it's not there anymore.
Okay.
Um, so I don't.
That would need to be an improvement then, because basically you're asking to do a, essentially a new use there and it needs to be brought to compliance again.
Okay.
How many kind, how many cars are you talking about, when you have a list of cars or whatever?
Uh, well, I'm funding myself, um, so from any given time, probably five to ten vehicles.
Cause she shows on Google Earth, you got a ton of vehicles now.
Those are probably for the automotive, the auto repair shop.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, yeah, yeah, the question is, is you're not, you're not saying that you're putting any additional parking? So I'm just curious, you know, I mean, you guys, Mark's Auto has always been a very good business and there's always a lot of cars there, so like, we're.
I, I, um, spent a lot of time trying to make a gravel parking lot in the back, but then I found out I would have to put sewer in and drainage and all that. So that was my original plan, um, but I, you know, I'm like, uh, funding myself. My, my friend who's a, you know, a, does a CAD program and he helps me make these site plans, I'm, I just kinda trying to do what I can with what I have. Um, so I, I did originally want to do a parking lot in the back, but I wouldn't be able to afford to have it dug up and put the sewer and drainage in and all that. Um, there are catch basins, basins nearby. So, uh, I, that's why I, I just went with adding the parking spots on the north side. Um, and, you know, I, traditional dealerships, you know, they grab your attention from the road, there, you know, there's a lot of money in them and whatnot. And I kinda understand you guys are thinking, you know, what it's gonna be like, uh, but it, it will be, uh, you know, a slow start. Um, I, I'm growing it myself and once I do get experience under my belt, I wish to, uh, you know, branch out and find my own location.
Yeah, as somebody that worked with his father for a lot of years, I'm just trying to avoid you having, having the old man yelling at you for your cars being in his way.
Yeah.
He, uh, he, he talks to me, he succeeds, he, uh, he's very helpful, I also helped him out as well.
So we, you know, basically what, what we're asking for is, is a stepping stone. We're not gonna live here. Basically, you need the license to get the building. Without the product, you can't buy the building. And once he, you know, gets his license, makes a little bit of revenue, well, eventually you're either gonna build a place or buy a place. But without the license, it's hard to, you know?
Yeah, the building helps with the license.
Exactly. And we're not gonna have our own customer, you know, you see how busy I am and, you know, we're willing to adapt, but, you know, we get cars hit it on very quickly and we're not gonna overload my parking lot. As far as, uh, the dumpster, I got no problem putting up the walls, the walls again. Like I said, the government guy just destroyed. Is it cemented now underneath? No. But it, and my grandfather was in here for twenty-eight years. I would assume so, but I.
No, it's because it's a special, special land use.
Did you get, did you guys get a copy of, of the?
Here's the, I gave that to Mark eight.
Yeah, um, because it's, uh, the, you're asking to do a new use, the site, that aspect needs to come into compliance again or whatever the code is now. I don't know what it was when you originally started, but there needs to be that concrete pad underneath and.
So you're talking a cement slab?
Yes.
With three walls and a, and a gate?
Yeah, and you can stop fencing, it just has to be obscured, so you can have privacy fencing and a gate.
And that parking lot, is that, uh, is that, what is that, just the gravel behind there or is that?
There is gravel behind there, yes.
Ashol?
It's not on the site.
Is it asphalt? Is it, is it gonna be blacktop or whatever?
Oh, no, um, no, I, my original plan was just gravel. Um, there, there's still room back there now, but it's not, it's not on paper, but my original plan was just, uh, crush asphalt or gravel. I wasn't.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on paper.
Mark, on your, uh, on the new business.
Okay.
You're gonna take some space inside of the existing building for this to bring customers in, is that correct or?
Um, no, not necessarily in the existing building. Um, I mean, the, the parking will be on the outside. Um, I, I do work in the existing building, I go there on the weekends because he's busy during Monday through Friday. So, you know, he allows, I go there, I work inside on the weekends. But, um, the, the vehicles will, uh, you know, be parked in the back and then I, you know, I, I don't know if I should be talking about the, the other parking lot that's in the back because it's not on paper, but there is gravel behind there. And I originally wanted to do that so I could show, hey, I put all this extra room in here and whatnot, but then I ended up getting stopped with the drainage.
So when you're talking to a customer, you're, where do you do this?
Um, so my customers, I have lots of people locally that are always asking me for cars, but with online, I sell them through Marketplace. Uh, and my customers are very comfortable with me because I have a strong mechanical background and I inspect the cars prior selling them. Um, I give them my, you know, personal contacts, like I'm there even after I sell a vehicle, um, you know, to answer any questions or help them. And, you know, that is how my dad runs his business and word travels quickly. So I do have, you know, customers that are coming to me, you know, wanting vehicles and whatnot.
Well, the point is if, if you have customers coming in and you got a space for them.
Yes.
Some sort.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to provide restrooms?
Well, I use, I use his front office and restrooms.
Okay, is it, are they ADA compliant?
Yep.
Got the rails in it and everything.
Okay.
All, you know, wheelchair accessible on these.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Basically, he uses the back lunchroom where the tables at, we've got a filing cabinet and all that back there.
Yeah, by, by state, I have my filing cabinet where they can come through anytime.
Will the signage change?
So this is the sign, um, Brenda's been helping me out a lot. Um, I'll have to come back afterwards to get a permit for my sign, but the sign that's out there, like the structure that's there, um, I joked with him and said it's like it's meant to be because there's a blank space in there right now. And I said that's.
Always that right.
That's where I'm gonna have to. So, um, I will have to get a permit for the sign, that will be coming later on, but, um, I will have a sign by the road. And then, um, after this, the state has to still come out and inspect it themselves. And with the, the rooms being, you know, together, same driveway, same front door, you know, I may run into issues with that there as well. But, uh, that's, that's what I have and so I'm trying to.
The cars will be delivered how?
Uh, so the cars, I pick up myself. Um, I don't have them shipped very often, but most of the time I pick them up myself. I got the equipment, I go and grab them. Um, and then after I have my dealer's license, I'll have dealer place as well. So, you know, um, I will be buying vehicles, uh, in Michigan through the local auctions and most of them I'll pick up myself, so.
And so you repair them right there in the shop?
Yes, uh, y- yes. The goal for the dealer's license is to find cars that are more so, um, you know, ready to go. Um, uh, uh, the vehicles that I work with right now, um, they, they do require motor repairs because I'm not a dealer yet. So they're all insurance claims. But, um, once I'm a dealer, I will be able to have a, a much more better supply of inventory. And I also want to be registered as the state as a dealer. Um, I was mentioning earlier, I have huge advantage with my dad owning the property. Uh, when I first started looking into this, I was trying to get, you know, all my ducks in a row. And it took me six months just to find an insurance company that would insure me because I hadn't been a dealer for three years prior already. So there's, you know, and then with that, you have to have your location, you have to have everything ready while you're submitting to the state. So, um, you know, it's very helpful that, you know, my dad has that and I, you know, can get everything ready and, and not have to have all of those, uh, you know, things. You know, the pavements and the building and all that while waiting for the dealer's license. But, yeah, I wanna get the. But yeah, I want to get the license, so I can get the insurance under my belt for a few years, you know, registered in the state's eyes. You know, where they see that I've been doing it, and then when I branch out, I'll, I'll be able to, you know, be set up much easier.
Is the parking lot good? Just being gravel like it is now, we're all good there?
The off-street parking, um, the, the current off-street parking, we, we meet the requirements for both businesses, so.
So we're not talking about too much, talking about fixing the dumpster?
Then landscaping. Yeah, the only, the only feedback that we have from all of our professionals would be that, yeah, the dumpster trash enclosure, uh, bringing that up to the current ordinance requirements and then the, the landscaping requirements.
Trees are on the other side of the topic, correct?
No, this would be the, along, so the, the ordinance states anywhere where our parking lot is adjacent to a, a.
Yeah, I got pine trees along here.
Yes, we've noticed these ones, but we need something in the back.
And there may be something back there, it's just not shown on the site.
Yeah, you don't have a site plan, but there are trees.
I got four, four pine, pine, pine trees along here.
Yeah, so the site plan only shows these three. So you may be in compliance, it's just unfortunate the site plan doesn't show it. You just have to have somebody redraw this and add another circle, circle, circle to show where the rest of it is.
Also my pipe runs here to my subterranean in the back, so I can't watch what I plant here.
Right.
And under Google, you should be able to see the pine trees on there too.
Yeah. You'll just have to add them to, to the site plan, that's what you can do. So the next step in this will be, uh, making a motion for, uh, to open this to a public hearing next month, correct?
Schedule.
Let's get a schedule of public hearing. Anybody else have anything on this or any other questions for the petition action? Somebody want to make a motion to schedule this for a public hearing in the November meeting?
I'll make a motion to schedule the special land use request for Mark A. Williams' reused car dealer lot at 9166 Marine City Highway. Bring public hearing at the November meeting.
November 19th.
November 19th.
A motion, a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You have this, right, Mark?
Yeah.
So Mark, not to belabor the point, but you'll make those corrections so you can bring them to the next meeting.
Yeah, yes. Yes, so, um, the site plan is solid, but I'd like me to figure out a new set with the trees on there as well. Okay, and then with the dumpster correction as well.
What we discussed tonight, try and get out.
So, do you have the notes from the different engineers, from PCE and from KSL Plan? Have copies of these?
Um, yeah, oh, yes, the plan that you put together, yes, I have it in the.
Well, the plan review from our engineering firm as well as our planning permission with the council.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we marked, uh, things we were talking about.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so, um, with the November, um, meeting, uh, is it after that that they would put it out in the newspaper for anyone to object or is it?
Well, the, it would, uh, it would be published next week.
Okay.
So.
Published next week, the actual public hearing or will be in that November meeting. And then after that point, we can make a decision based on the updated site plan and that.
Okay, all right, thank you everyone.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next, uh, item of new business is the site plan review for Robert Clancy's contractor yard at 9342 Marine City Highway. Mr. Benner and Alec and Harley to step to the podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. This is been at this location since about 2010. And so in that site plan submission, we showed two three-sided buildings that he basically resurrected. He took them down from Schmitz Marina in Baltimore, brought them to this piece of property for the storage of his equipment. So this longer building is on the west side of the property. It faces to the east and has three sides, north and south and west. So it's basically a three-sided building that he put his equipment on there. And this building is similar. It was taken down piece by piece at Schmitz Marina, that was their storage facilities. They were three-sided buildings when they were at Schmid's. And then the, so they want to build a new building out here, a hoop building, and then a shaft up near the current building. This building here is four-sided, but this one's three.
But the two, the two existing three-sided, four-sided sided buildings that are on here, those aren't a part of this site plan review, correct? It's just these two new proposed buildings?
Right, but, so that, we put them there so that you knew that they existed. So like out in front, this parking lot was approved a few years ago, but he hasn't built it.
Gotcha.
So it was previously approved, but he hasn't built it.
Okay.
And then the hoop building, looking at your ordinance, it says if it's built according to the manufacturer's recommendation and meets their applicable building code standards, that's when it will be done. It's not going to be used for the storage of solids, gases, or other chemicals or flammable materials. The structures are detached structures and subject to setback requirements and we meet that. The, it says if you have a hoop building under 200 square feet, you don't need a building permit. Obviously, we get site plan approval, we'll have to apply for a building permit. And the cover must be maintained and intact. Obviously, if he goes through the process and the expense of building this building, he's going to maintain the hoop cover. If you drive by his place, you see his equipment on the road. It's some of the best, well-maintained equipment that you see in this facility. It's par, above par. So we would ask that you approve this submission. The fire department didn't have a problem with it and they, uh, PCE, they gave their comments. It's an existing facility on the site plan. It does have the TOFO, the drainage in place. The site plan shows that there's a detention basin here. It's surface water, it's a contractor's yard. So up in the front, it's paved in the back here. It's a gravel, uh, asphalt millions because they run heavy equipment on their front end loaders, bulldozers, excavators. They're all on tracks, so that's why it's that type of surface. The, um, so I think we meet all those requirements. So we would ask that you approve it.
May I ask a question, please? At one of our meetings, the first meetings we had pre-application, you referenced, uh, shipping containers as the foundation for the hoop building?
That's correct.
That needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it, it, so the building will sit on shipping containers, that's the foundation versus digging it into the ground. They're not there for storage and there's no preclusion in your ordinance that I saw. It said you cannot have shipping containers as the foundation. It, they have structural integrity and they weigh a lot, so they're not going to blow away.
Our ordinance says they're now allowed in any district in the township.
For storage. It says for storage and it's not for storage, for the foundation of this hoop building.
So Karen's addressed this and, and her site plan review and all that Karen talked to her comments, uh, in regards to the review.
Yeah, I never got a copy of Karen's.
Send it to Mr. Clancy. Via email.
We can get your caper before you.
I thought you just said you saw the Leveer reports and PCE.
I saw the fire department and PCE.
Here, I'll need it back, but.
Um, so in my, uh, review, uh, again, um, the applicant is, um, proposing two new accessory buildings and also having a zoning compliance review for, um, two existing buildings that did not undergo the, um, site plan process. Um, I did not, um, see any issue with the, um, two existing buildings. Um, they appear to meet, um, the zoning ordinance. Um, for the two proposed buildings, um, the applicant's representative was able to address the concerns about the proposed hoop building. Um, in TSCO's zoning ordinance, it does state that shipping containers shall not be used for, um, storage purposes. However, um, it appears that the shipping containers, um, proposed for the hoop building are to be used for structural support in an industrial district and therefore I, um, I'm in agreement with the applicant's representative that it could be permitted for the hoop building. Um, again, in my review, I did find, um, the landscaping whenever in the industrial district, um, if parking, uh, if there's a green belt between a parking area and adjacent property, it needs to, um, have landscaping, a large deciduous tree of 40 feet. I did see existing vegetation, however, we would need to, um, have it confirmed that it meets the ordinance standards. Um, we also need to see the trash enclosure details to ensure that, um, it meets the township ordinance as well. And, um, we were sent some cut sheets for some new lighting. Um, however, the placement of the lighting to me was not clear on the site plan. So I was, would just ask for the applicant to confirm where the light was placed and if, to confirm that's us, we'll shoot it downward.
The reference to the landscaping, I was taking a note when you were mentioning that. So on the site plan, where did you want?
So basically, this parking area, there's vegetation there, I can see on an aerial.
Right.
But it needs to be, uh.
Along this detention path?
Right, right. There's landscaping there though. And so we just need to figure out what the confirmation is of what the landscape spacing is.
Okay. We can do that.
Um, I have one question and it just, as I'm looking through Karen's report here. Um, letter G of the ordinance states that detached accessory buildings shall not exceed two stories or 35 feet in height. Uh, I know most shipping containers, um, are 10 feet tall, eight to 10 feet tall. I'm not sure the height of your hoops that you're going to put on top of these. Um, but I think it should be noted that the site plan does not indicate that the hoop building will not exceed 35 feet. So as long as, as long as, uh, that won't be an issue, we just get a.
I can tell you what it is here in a second.
So what, what is the, that, with the storage container, what's going in, what's, what's happening?
Nothing. Listen.
Now I have a problem with that.
Okay, but if the person says they're not going to put gasoline or flammables in the hoop building, it's in compliance with your ordinance.
So you're not storing anything in there?
In the hoop building, not in the shipping containers.
So is the hoop building upside, or the storage container upside down, do we just hook it to the, to the bottom of the storage container? Or is the storage container up, right side up?
It's right side up.
So how are you then storing in the, in the hoop building?
No, so let's say by, for illustration purposes, as I understand it, let's say this podium is the storage container.
Okay.
That will sit on the ground.
All right.
There'll be storage containers on that side and assuming that this is the opening. And the hoop building structure is attached to that steel shipping container pursuant to the manufacturer's specification. So it's similar to that.
So it does, it gives you the height and the structure to keep the hoop building, because they're heavy and they give you that extra height of the sidewall.
So you're just running the machines up underneath to keep out the weather?
Correct, correct.
But you're not storing it in there?
They're using the shipping containers because they already have them as a foundation.
Yeah, I, I, I got that now.
But yeah, they're not, technically they're not storing anything in the container itself. They're creating a covered storage base to be tied to the container.
So like if you go along 26 Mount Road, you'll see other places that have hoop buildings. Some of them put aggregate material on there. Some of the landscaper people, they put salt in there in the winter time because they have customers that need it. And then summer and spring comes, their salt supply is diminished.
Hey, I, I just didn't get it.
Yeah, is to give the height and structural integrity.
Gotcha.
To this and then the manufacturer has methodology.
So you've got rat walls and you've got a storage container and then you're actually storing stuff underneath the hoop building, but not the containers.
Right.
All right.
Did you get the height out?
Yeah, as, as far as the height, it would be, our storage containers are eight and a half feet tall. And then the, the structure itself is 22 feet on top of that, so.
Okay. All right. Karen, did you have anything else?
No, um, like I said, the, uh, the applicant has verbally confirmed about the hoop building. Um, we need confirmation about the landscaping, but in the parking lot, like I said, there's existing vegetation. We just need to make sure it's 40 feet in case something needs to be added. Um, in the trash enclosure, we need the details on that to make sure it's zoning ordinance and, um, confirmation of the lighting placement and shooting.
So are these, the things that, that you have, would these be things that they could be, send to us before we issue a building permit? Or do we have to table approval on that until they do it and have to come back and hold over?
So it's the planning question.
Yeah, you can make a, you know, with those exceptions.
Additional approval?
Additional approval based on, uh, providing the details characters on a lot.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for the existing proposed accessory building subject to the following.
Wait, wait.
Mr. Chairman, there's some other comments.
You can have a motion and still have comments before voting.
Okay.
But I'll wait for the other comments.
I have to, Gary, Mr. Clancy, I got to ask the question because it's a procedural question. Why were no permits taken out for these buildings when they were brought in, the other two?
Because it was an existing contractor's yard and he felt that they fit in with what the previous approvals were.
Well.
And that's why we're here.
Yeah. To be honest with you, I did come here, Mr. Relamp was here at the time. And he looked it over and thought that he did not see a problem with it.
What year was it on bill?
COVID.
And what, what year were the buildings put in?
COVID, we did it during COVID, right Greg?
Mm-hmm.
Had to be COVID. So, uh.
2021?
Yeah, 2021. The, uh, I don't know that there's, I mean, I guess the only thing that could, what would be in question about the building? Opt for the foundation, I mean, because you can't see that. So I guess if, if you say, hey, we want you to dig up alongside the foundation so you can, we can see what you have.
Do you have foundation in?
We did it ourselves. It's all, it's all concrete. But other than that, I mean, it's a steel structure and not really a whole lot to it.
Right. And I understand that and both of you gentlemen are class acts. I know that. But we have a procedure.
You understand that.
We have a procedure problem here. And I would suggest before we make any further movement that we have our, our attorney look at this and make sure that we are copensating with you in what we're doing here tonight. I have never seen a site plan approved with existing buildings that don't have permits. Been in it for a few years myself. And all I'm trying to do is protect the township, my building inspector, those folks, us here, and you.
I've, I've been in situations where the people, the property owner, have built a structure without site plan approval and then it was approved by the planning commission and what was in just built township. One of the conditions was that they wanted to make sure that the foundation was down 48 inches. So we dug next to the building, the building inspector came out, confirmed that it was 50 inches in the ground and that it had the structural integrity of what the ordinance required. And this one, you have pillars, it's not a continuing foundation, right?
Correct.
And so this is a steel upright.
Column.
That was hooked to the concrete abutment in the ground. That was hooked to the concrete abutment in the ground.
And Gary, I understand exactly what you're talking about. There may be even a bomb, you know, who knows? But we've got to be protective, and I don't want to put all this on our building inspector, because that's not fair either. We're into what they call health safety issues here. And your people are in those buildings all the time. I mean, I would work in your buildings anytime, no doubt. The structural, you can see it, that's not the issue, it's a procedural problem. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to suggest that you've got a motion on the floor, there may be a-
There's no motion on the floor yet. Please, so, where I go?
The only thing that I would say is this, is when you build a new building, and you get the permit, the site plan approval, you dig the footing, the inspector comes and looks at it, says it's kosher, you pour the concrete, they come back and inspect, sometimes engineer comes to make sure that it's done right, and then you proceed to put the building up. It's a steel building, it's not a wood structure, and I'll just give you this historical perspective, one of, I'm from a family of eleven, five boys, one of my younger brothers helped put up one of these buildings, because he worked at Schmitz Arena for four summers. So, it's test, it was right on the lake, so it had a lot of wind, and it was stood the test of time. And at Robert's place, I believe it's structurally sound, your building inspector, or your engineer, John Bonning's group, can come and take a look at it, we don't have a problem with that. But, obviously, it's an after-the-fact situation. My client, without a court order, is not going to take the building down as to some procedural aspects.
We're not asking that.
The only thing you can do is inspect it after the fact.
Well, and we want to make, and you are probably right, I don't know, this is beyond my pay grade. So, in protecting all of us, we need to make sure that what we have, we have our health safety issues covered, we have the township covered, we have you, and you, and you covered, so there's no issue down the road. We all know that if someone, for God's reason, gets hurt in one of those buildings, well, you know it better than anybody, Gary, off to court we go, and we all try and figure out what happened. We don't want that. What I want to try and do is make sure that we all walk away from this, and it's very positive for all of us, that's what I'm at. So, Mr. Chairman, I would say-
Well, let me, let me hear from the building department.
You know, if this thing meets the site final approval, and, you know, and it's done pretty much to specs, if I make a bigger footing up, I don't have a problem with it, I've been in those situations before. I, I know the caliber of guy this is over there, it's not a fly-by-night outfit, I'll give an inspection on it, and that's the best I can do. What are you going to do, they compare it now, blow it back up again, and come out?
Well, excuse me-
We're not, we're not-
Sorry, go ahead, Brendan.
I'm looking at it from the procedural aspect of the building department as we follow your approvals.
Mm-hmm, right.
There's a drawing submitted that is reviewed by our building official. He determines whether he's going to sign off on it or not, he determines how many inspections are required, and then a building permit is issued. This is a different situation, I understand that. Roland has the final word, but if he's going to do inspections, there'll have to be fees attached to the same.
So, let me ask you this, Brenda, in terms of procedure, if these buildings didn't exist, and we approved this site plan as it is today, they would, their next step would be to come to the building department and apply for their permits with the required documentation to show the, show the, the drawings for these buildings to get their building permit?
If the two were not on there, yes, it's normal.
Regardless if they're on there or they're not on there, the point is, the process goes, site plan approval, then building permit application, and during the building permit applications, when they submit their drawings, and they get their fee schedule, their inspection schedule, so on and so forth, correct?
So, we'll include the two that Roland referred to on October the eighth-
Yep.
-in the entire process.
So-
If that's what the, you folks decide you want to do, Roland?
If there's a, if there's a history on this thing, and you had some documentation on some of that, I haven't even seen the building, so I wouldn't even know what you have so far, but, you know, if I go out there, and it looks to me like you need maybe the trusses, the engineer, or whatever, to make me happy, that would be not a problem with it.
Not a problem here. And, and you know what, with all due respect to everyone here, was probably not a good time for anyone back then, because I know Mr. Rummanap had some health issues, and then COVID came along, and it was just hard to get anything done. And so, we didn't intentionally subvert something, other than, other than to the, to the extent that we had these two buildings there, and we had nothing for our crews to do, and it was, it was a way to keep our people working. And, and that's really all I wanted to do. We would be more than happy to entertain Roland, have him come out, anything he wants to see, or for that matter, anyone else, but we're not, we have nothing to hide.
So, can you treat this all as one?
So, that's key-
It'd be one drawing, one process for the whole project?
Well, let me ask you this, because I'm not sure that Robert has any drawings from when Schmitz built it, and-
No, Eric, no, no.
Were they, so when Schmitz sold the Marina, I represented them, and we went through the process within Baltimore to convert it from a total marine operation to Marina and Robert did the construction, the dismantlement of those two buildings, and moved them to his facility. The, we can have Roland come out anytime to do the inspection, and we'll pay his inspection fee, and we'll take pictures of the inside and the outside of the building, and that, to me, is just as good as a drawing that somebody makes after the fact, but it's easier. And then, that way, you have them for your records, and we'll give you pictures of the landscaping along the pile.
As far as, as far as procedures, I mean, a site plan approval, a site plan approval, they have to get the building, they have to go through the building permit process and inspection process, just as, as they would if they weren't constructed yet, regardless if they approved this to higher, we table it and have it, I don't see any-
There's the question, I don't think anybody here really knows at this point, and that's why-
Know what?
Gary's here, and I think we should be represented by council to talk this through, and make sure that we are all covered. I don't really see where that is such an issue, it's going to cost, what, a month, or what have you, and we get it done. And it's, it's, you know, we all can walk away, and we, and, and sleep at night, and it's not a, it's not a problem.
That, that's entirely up to you guys, how you want to proceed. The only thing I can add is, these are pre-engineered buildings, you know, pre-engineered buildings kind of speak for themselves, they are pre-engineered. And, you know, if you want to do that, I, I guess that, that's entirely up to you guys.
You don't think by any building permits and inspections for the two-
In the meantime-
Motion?
I don't, I don't know. The reason I don't know is that's why I want to bring the opinion-
Actually, still, we're not really here, we weren't really here for those two buildings tonight.
Does it hurt you to go an extra month, and we table it, to table it to the next month, does that hurt you?
I don't think it really hurt us, does it, Greg?
Other than the fact that we won't be able to get started, you know?
Well, you already started two of them, so you always had two, you got three.
Karen, yes. And as in any site plan approval process, all these approvals are subject to compliance without engineering and building codes. And because we have a unique situation where the site plan has proposed buildings, but also existing buildings that we're also looking at, the existing accessory structures would continue to proceed with building department compliance to ensure that these buildings are safe and they meet code. And the proposed accessory structures would proceed in obtaining the proper permits. So, it's how the, it's up to the planning commission what they would like to do, if the planning commission would like to have some conditional approvals to move it forward, or if they would like to bring in the township attorney, it's up to the planning commission.
And the township attorney's not going to address safety issues, as Mr. Clancy-
Right, ultimately, it's the building code that would need to be examined at these, and that's outside of the zoning ordinance, that's the Michigan building code that Roland would enforce.
We have a number of people who are applying for permits in this township, who goes through the steps and the process. We also have to think of that. And this is an element that we need to, I think, nip in the bud, and, Bob does nothing to do with you.
All right, I have it.
The concept of building without permits, there's a reason that we do this.
We can't change what was done in 2020.
I know.
We're trying to rectify it now by allowing-
That's exactly right. But we need to cover our bases, man.
But we're trying to rectify it now by allowing building permits and inspections by our building inspector on the two buildings that are shown on the site plan that weren't originally approved.
And I think we should make sure that, obviously, the, the process, like, whatever fees would have been paid, had you done it then, wouldn't we pay?
Yeah, that's no problem.
And that, you know what I mean?
And if Roland wanted, at each of those two buildings, one of the foundations dug out to show that it's sufficiently deep in the ground-
Yep.
-Mr. Clancy would do that. And I've seen it done before, I've been on a project in Chesterfield, my guy dug the dirt out, I went there with the inspector and the engineer, we looked at it, we measured it with a steel tape, everybody said it's sufficiently in the ground. Robert didn't put up this building, they had it blow away. He just didn't, you know, set it on a four-inch cement slot.
Gary, that's not the issue, yeah.
But you're, you're never going to change what's already took place, that's his-
That's exactly right, it's a process.
And I, I don't want the misconception that a precedent is being set here, because we're on TV, we have an upstanding businessman in this community who, in all honesty, has made a mistake in what he did. But I don't want it to become a mistake that other people might claim-
Right.
-they made.
That was under a pretty unique situation.
Well, we issued a building permit for EMC Express during COVID. I met them outside.
Well, I understand, I understand, you did.
Took care of all of those things. And I'm not trying to disrespect Mr. Clancy, but I understand where Keith's coming from. It's just that sometimes you put the cart before the horse, and it comes back to bite you in the butt.
That's why I said, if Roland goes out, and the electrical guy goes out, whatever, we need to go out and approve all the stuff, and get it approved, and we table this thing for a month, come back with everything, with the buildings, all the buildings, all the permits supplied for, I don't know, you got, do you want to get rid of that parking lot somehow, since you don't really have a parking lot?
In the front?
Yeah.
Well, we just showed it because it was previously approved, and I teased Robert saying, I like it the way it is, because he's got his old antique grater out in front, and if we build the parking lot, the grater's gone, because it'll be in the wrong place.
Eventually, we're going to need it, though.
Right. And so, and if that approval has last, we'll come back and submit a site plan to say-
Well, how long does this, when that approval was done, how long has it been?
It's probably been more than two years.
Oh, definitely.
At least more than two years.
More than two years, probably back to-
So, Brenda, quick question, on the procedure of things, typically, you need an approved site plan to get a building permit. If we don't approve this, he can't apply even for a building permit or an inspection of these, in, in, in these existing buildings, is that correct?
I would say that's correct, it's on the site plan.
I could put a pending approval of site plan, something like that.
I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm thinking of, back to your point of setting a precedence, we don't want to set a precedence of issuing building permits before site plans are approved either.
Yeah, well-
I know, it's, it's a unique situation, and it's kind of a difficult one.
We, we didn't dream it up on purpose, believe me.
Oh, I, we know you didn't, we know.
Mr. Chairman, can I make my motion?
Sure.
If it doesn't, you have a second, it does.
No, I'd like to finish making my motion.
Go first, Dan.
I make a motion to approve the site plan for the existing and proposed accessory buildings subject to the following: confirmation of meeting the standards of hoop-for-hoop buildings, confirmation of landscaping, abutting the side parking lot, confirmation of meeting the standards for trash enclosures, confirmation of lighting placement and shielding, also adding that building permits and inspections on the two existing buildings as shown on the site plan are required by the building department, along with all fees involved with such permits and inspections.
Okay. We have a motion with many conditions, do I have a second?
No.
Seeing none, motion fails.
Seeing none, motion fails. So, now we can present an ulterior motion?
Does, I just have a quick question. Can they be handled separately? Can we move forward with the current buildings he's here for, and then also address that these buildings need to be handled, and we would seek counsel on that?
And your set of precedents.
For, oh, because they're on-
You're moving forward with something that-
Because they're moving forward with-
It's all on site plan, it's not-
I just thought maybe you could handle one, and then deal with the other.
Do you really need counsel on our-
That's kind of what my motion was.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in getting attorney involved to tell us-
You're being there on.
-what Roland can go out and look at.
Exactly.
Because Roland's opinion's going to be stronger than-
I'm with you.
What do you, Karen, do you have any? Have you ever seen this situation?
I have not, but I don't think it's, it's, it's not the most common thing, but I mean, they, they're, they're trying to come into compliance.
And that's-
And they came to, we had a pre-planning meeting, and this is how we've been proceeding, so.
We've had this before, but before we instituted all these new things, we've had that problem where somebody's already had something up.
So, there was a, a pre-planning meeting for this?
There was a pre-planning meeting.
Yeah, and Robert and I came, and based on that, we put that drawing together to show those buildings, because they're obviously there. And the two proposed buildings, and that's why I say, have your building inspector come out, if he, he can do his first visual inspection, and if he says, I'd like you to dig one of the foundations out on each building, Mr. Clancy will do that.
This way, I think it's proven, though, I think you just do it, and it's proven, and everybody's happy, instead of having all this chaos here.
I think Dan's motion was contingent on the building.
That was part of the conditions, that the building inspections would have to occur in fees.
So, could we proceed, make that contingency, that we deal with those two existing buildings, and upon that being cleared up, then proceed with the other buildings to be built?
There's like ten conditions listed there, we've never done that many conditions before.
Are they fully compliant with the site plan right now? I mean, if you-
That's the location of the site, yeah.
Two of them are, but two of them are phantom buildings.
Huh?
They're not phantom, they're there.
Well, they're phantom in the line, Gary.
Well, they're phantom in the sense that with no permit, we agree with that.
Well, there you are.
That's good. You have to be somewhere-
Was the township aware of these buildings? Like, I'm just curious how, like, they're coming, and they are coming now to make right on it. We assess these buildings.
It was caught by our assessor.
And we probably should have fixed it then.
We've been trying to fix it.
So, he has been paying taxes on these buildings, it's not like they're hidden, it wasn't tampered with. I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I think we need to do right by them, and Roland's opinion is like-
Karen, can we proceed with the two existing buildings, and approve this site plan, and once those two were cleared up, then they can proceed with the new buildings, do the building?
I have no objection to that.
Right, that's not what we paid for.
I would say, I think Dan's-
Yeah, I, I think after further discussion, we have a motion on the floor, do we have, do we have any support for it at this point, after further discussion of the situation? Dan's motion is, is on the floor, do we have support?
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the approval of the site plan with the conditions Dan listed.
I think he's got to read them again.
Well, they're, they'll be on the record, but you can go ahead and read them again, Dan. Okay, I have a motion and a second for the approval of the site plan with the conditions Dan listed.
I think he's got to read it again.
Well, they'll be on the record, but you can go ahead and read them again, Dan. So my motion reads, motion to approve the site plan for the existing and proposed accessory buildings subject to the following. Confirmation of meeting the standards for hoop buildings. Confirmation of the landscaping, abiding the side parking lot. Confirmation of meeting the standards for trash enclosures. Confirmation of lighting placement and shielding. Also adding that the building permits and inspections on the two existing buildings that were not previously brought to us, as shown on the site plan, are required by the building department along with all fees involved with such permits and inspections.
Maybe you should put that on top of the first one.
And it's all one motion, I don't think.
It's all one.
Okay. So I have the motion by Dan with the, with the conditions. I have the second by Jim. We'll go to a vote. All in favor of the motion as listed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Approved. Karen?
Thank you. Let the record note that I am abstaining from voting.
You have that noted? Okay, Chris.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
The community wrecked these two buildings.
Sir?
When they were wrecked, one of them fell off the scaffolding and broke his arm. And my Dan and I went there with our ambulance and took him off and took him to the hospital. But it wasn't a life threatening injury. And I think they had six balls and we had five.
We're all going to listen to James and Gary. No longer here to tell us stories. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Oh, and I was their paper boy.
That is all the new business we have on the agenda for tonight. The next, the next item on the agenda is the master plan five year update. Karen, you have anything to discuss on the master plan five year update?
I feel like we're ending, wrapping up the process. Still in the free period. If anyone wants to comment on it, they can. They want to read it, submit a letter for the township if they saw.
Any, we'll open up to public comment on the master plan if anybody wants to address the board in regards to the public, or the master plan. Okay, no, nothing from the public on the master plans? The plant, next item on the agenda is the planners' update. No updates? Commission comments? Anything from the DVA?
Yeah, they had a, I wasn't there. They had a guy come in, one of the garages. Decided to make it smaller. So he decided against everything. He's going to book a shed.
Did he ever come in front of planning commission for a site plan or you? Oh, he just needed a, a building permit?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Township board or any other commissions? Nothing, Jim? Anything else from anybody else? Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I like it. I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Barry, adjourn.